Good, ready, everybody? Go order. Eight o'clock, roll call.
Steve Attelik?
Sarah.
Seven, I knew what you meant.
Sorry.
Joanna Radzik?
Present.
Robert Pinell?
Present.
Brian Mason?
Here.
Kyle Keppa?
Present.
Muriem Frazier-Lions?
Present.
And Tracy Bankowski. All present.
Okay, public hearings, we have none. Approval of agenda. I guess I want to add one thing. If Kyle, would you want to discuss that this evening? Give a heads up?
We'd have to do the agenda, I guess.
Okay, let's discuss it afterwards, okay, go.
Now, next meeting.
Somewhere.
Okay.
There are bylaw and amendment changes being done in Decorah Park. And I want to know if the village can have any input in this. And also to bring up that subject within the PUD language as well. But they're literally just leading out our public trail out of there with this document. And I just don't understand how they can alter the PUD so much and how the village can get involved in this document.
Okay, so we'll just make it a second, I can run its own. Bylaws and amendments and HOA. Bylaws and amendments to PUD, HOA, and how it relates to the village.
And I'll put discussion next to that.
Under new business. Yep. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Sue.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings. Public comments on agenda items, anyone? Okay, approval of the minutes for October 2nd, 2018. Did everybody have a chance to review this? You know, as we're doing, do we have another set looming? That, are we good? No, we're good, okay.
I don't know, we're seeing a lot of those. Is that a copy or? How did you see this? I haven't handed the vote.
Okay.
We don't have a hard copy here, right?
No. Okay, we'll table that and see that everybody gets a set of those for next meeting.
Because I know there was a change, even though I did copy the clerk, but I think we learned that the clerk wasn't going to handle that anymore. Someone else is going to forward it.
Possibly.
Maybe Sandy, Sandy Cazol, not in the office.
Yeah.
My bad. I apologize if that was on me.
But it's okay, so.
Did he handle that even?
I'll apologize if that was my responsibility.
But yeah, it is, it's the clerk's responsibility.
It is, but she's been busy with other things, so we decided to take it on and it just kind of fell through the cracks. So, we'll get forward it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table the October 2nd, 2018 minutes until next month. Have a second?
Second, favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Communications, correspondence, and workshop. Anyone? Any communications at them to share? Action items on matters of consideration, old business, industrial zoning ordinance discussion. That will come from Jeff.
In front of everybody, you should have a copy of the analysis of the heavy light and industrial office districts. When we talked last month, we provided you the maps that we were using for analysis to try and kind of show what we were looking at in terms of available frontage, properties that are still vacant and developable. And potentially when you look at some of the heavy industrial or even the light industrial properties, potentially the properties that could be repurposed and redeveloped as such, those same types of uses. Well, we take a look at the zoning ordinance, but you'll see is in the ordinance, there's a schedule of regulations. And that schedule of regulations gives dates, the setbacks, minimum frontages, the maximum lot coverage, again, the height and bulk of buildings that you've rolled out of. And you have those, you have basically all those parameters spelled out for each of the zoning districts. The ones highlighted red, industrial office, light industrial, heavy are the ones we focus down. One of the things that we found is our heavy industrial, we've talked about this a couple of times, we have 350 feet of frontage, just a minimum that we're requesting. We don't have that much property available now for someone to develop at that standard. And even if we take a look at potential parcels that could be assembled together, we most likely would still be looking at something with a dimension of variance. And it's best practice not to be sending things to the ZBA for variance, just as, as we noted in the report, a variance should really only be granted for a hardship on property. Like if the guy's got a property about a rock out of property and he can only build his building, a certain part of variance could be considered in that case to maybe let it go a little bit closer to the side or assuming there's no other external impacts from that happening on the site. So, what we try to focus on here is the numbers that are in these categories. Took a look at other zoning ordinances in the town, like Washington Township, Shelby, Macomb. Tried to look for people who had a lot of similar acreages available along the Mileroads. And one of the things we found is most of our numbers were high. So, without going through a long discussion, if you go to the second page in the analysis, in the two colored boxes, kind of gives you a breakdown of what you live in, what these stands. In heavy industrial, we have 190 acres, but 137 of that has been developed. There's about 52 acres still undeveloped. And then we take a look at all the frontage. Our average frontage is 331 feet, but then a lot of that's already been developed. And that's the frontage, that's a lot, that's a lot on 26 Mile. So, the other thing that we looked at, not only with frontage, we also looked at the minimum acres. So, if you say someone can be a little bit smaller, we were saying we had to have three acres minimum for heavy industrial. The philosophy behind that is that, okay, we want to have space around the building, so there's green space, then you have plenty of buffer for use. What most communities have done is they've gone one acre together. Is that one acre, you have all the other setbacks and things that are covered. This is not the site of a building on that site. So, if a one acre site has a setback of so many feet from the side lots and so many feet from the road, it only allows so much envelope to actually put a building in. So, a one acre minimum, most people aren't going to put a factory and they're not going to be able to make it fit. So, it's going to scale up as they're, it scales up, their due firmance is going to scale up. If they need 150,000 square feet of building, they're going to have to have the amount of land to give them the proper setbacks. So, our suggestion is to go for three acres down to a lot. To also hold a one acre minimum for like industrial and industrial office. Because that includes parcels along Comcast Drive, parcels that are adjacent behind the municipal building here. We're making a recommendation to increase the minimum frontage for heavy industrial to 150 feet. Cutting that down by half will basically bring a majority of the parcels that are buildable and still developable, especially ones along the Roselle Road, into compliance where they could be developed without necessarily having to do with the city, because they have the capacity for it. If we were a community that was rapidly growing and had a lot of green or brown space for industrial growth, I would say we would keep these numbers where they're at. But since the community is a mature community, you have industrial, you have some industrial uses that are most likely not going anywhere anytime soon in terms of accessible in some of those places. It would, I think, benefit the community to grow with a little bit of lower standards. So, it would be a lot easier for people to look at it and be able to come and make those assessments. So, the other thing that you'll see is the maximum lot coverage. This is how much of a lot can be covered by the building. If we take the total square feet of the building and then look at the total square foot of the lot, if we're going to complete 300% coverage. We're looking to increase it to 40%, because as you break the size of that lot down, just that little bit, it gives a little bit more envelope to build out of. So, we have these here for your consideration. I'll open it up for discussion. At the same time, recognizing that as we're going through all these different districts, we're going to do this incrementally, this could be something we could agree to and then set aside and do a larger approval later. It's at your guys' discretion how we will proceed.
Questions, anyone? Rob?
When you're showing the 445 feet and 535 feet long Roselle?
Yes.
How would those fit the current 350 feet?
Those.
The vacant properties?
Those, those two. Those two properties do. Those two properties do their.
The backside, there are a lot of cover, doesn't it?
Yeah, if you go to the backside, then we're talking light industrial, that's the different setback. We do have a couple of single-family residential homes that are there that most likely will all, will most likely be included at one point in time for some of this stuff. If we look at where Ballers is, Ballers is across two lots right now. We've told them that they need to do a combine on that, so that's probably something we're going to see coming forward to us in the future.
Where is the actual site plan for that project? Because it looks like crack, there's enough cement, there's no, I mean, it's just a total crap hole since the moment they even started putting cars in it. Did it ever come to the planning commission?
There was no site plan in the planning commission.
Why are they even open? Shouldn't we be closing stuff like that? Sorry. It looks like crack. I mean, is there a height? That's another thing, is there like a height? I mean, because you can see that pile of crack that basic metals, you know, a mile each way.
None of the heavy industrial district doesn't have any specifications for height or bulk of those items.
Can we?
I can't say, the only thing I've seen that the state's ready to do at the height of this compost in operations, I'll probably make a pile of compost, but I'm not sure on that. I'd have to take a look at that if that come up before.
I mean, I've been bargaining with them for years. They never come to plan for any kind of anything as far as a site plan or that I'm aware of. These seven years, they opened it off when I was on council and they just got to open.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, they just threw that.
It's kind of frustrating to sit here and read this stuff and go through this when nothing is done anyways. I mean, whatever our current zoning is and what's been done to these properties, and we sit here and we read and think and we're paying you and going through all this, but what's the use of it? And we're asking whatever they want.
At some, well, at some point in time, at some point in time, you may have a change in land ownership, there may be a change in use. This would definitely help that, it would help assemble properties along there. It would make each, most of those properties along 26, aside from Basco, all be conforming, to some extent become conforming properties. As far as past history and as far as the character and the look of that district, it is a heavy industrial district. I don't, the village is on it at that point in time. I don't know why, you know, things were not done at that time. There's a point, there's a point at which the village needs to decide how retroactive they want to be. I mean, if a use has been gone and allowed to happen for a long period of time and no one's done anything about it, it's hard to go back into enforcement.
Well, there's no garage being built on 26. And that has been since we've been here and nothing's come to us.
That's, no, that's the Waldman property, the site plan was done from that. We've held, he was, basically he's been held to every element of this zoning. He's just, from what I understand, they've run into some issues with funding on that project.
Has he done an L S R O on here?
Yes.
Oh, so he did this some time ago?
Yeah, there was a full site plan that came through planning commission for that and we worked extensively with engineering with him. He's just kind of in a pinch for funds at this point.
He was granted some variances too, was he?
For that property, there was a very, setback variance was granted on the side yard property, I believe, for that after Ballers signed off of it when they talked about the construction materials of the building.
And Basco is doing something to their property over there as well.
Yeah, not aware of it.
Lights have topped up or, but they've been doing some kind of construction on that property, I noticed the other day. Has anything come to your ground?
No, nothing, nothing that I noticed come through planning for a zoning element. I can't speak for building if someone came in for permits on other things on the existing site.
I mean, I think on the topic of, you know, the suggestion of changes, I mean, to me it makes sense, I mean, if we're, not, not that it's disagreeing with Rob's standpoint, but from the standpoint of making, making it easier for the lots to be conforming, that seems to make sense in my opinion. But to Rob's point, yeah, if people aren't following. And I know, you know, especially like the basic metals, the trash heap that they have that you can see from all sorts of 26 Mile, I think that's been a topic of co-enforcement for a long time and just hasn't gotten any support. 26 Mile has been a topic of co-enforcement quite a bit.
I see, they're increasing.
Yeah, I mean, Mario's truck and trailer, in my opinion, that should have screen in it, you shouldn't be able to see through the fines. There's all sorts of issues, in my opinion, along 26 Mile. And it's, a lot of people are coming into the village along 26 and seeing all that. But it is what it is, that's another subject. But as far as the recommendations, I mean, they seem to make sense to me. If it makes it easier for these businesses to be conforming.
I think the two things it'll do, it will make more of the property that's out there conforming. It'll also reduce the number of elements. It will reduce the number of people who would need to go to ZBA and therefore can expedite the approval process without having to go through another set of meetings.
Like the industrial boundary, that obviously is, I mean, the frontage for that is, what, maybe 20 feet, 30 feet?
Correct, I think maybe 40, 45, maybe 50 on some of those. That's an oddball property. And to be perfectly honest, I did not count those as squared off frontages because there's a mix there. I think that's all, that front part of the property is actually zoned downtown, downtown mixed development. So, but as I drew it here, this is the actual parcel ownership that you see here. So, if you draw a line, I think from Delane Cross, everything from a Delane to Main is actually downtown mixed.
Now, when you, on our master plan, in comparison to this, doesn't necessar, these are what they're all currently sold, right? These are all the heavy industrial.
This is our, this is, yeah, what you're seeing here is all heavy industrial and then just the difference between the green and the pink is what's big and what has a use on it.
Because I mean, like the property on Adrian Ridge, the single piece of heavy industrial, North of Clark there.
Well, it's light.
That's considered light industrial.
As a page.
Which is on the back, yeah.
You only have the industrial back in this corner that's currently zoned on the first page.
Correct.
The rest is light industrial.
Or are more of the industrial office, and they're very similar. They're very similar in their categories of what the actual uses that are permitted in those are.
Is Hero Tech Industries, are they still in business?
I don't know, I just, I know the signs there, that's why we label them.
Because they're still, it's, they're still.
I like, every time I drive by, I just.
Move it up.
Move it out. Next, at my, now, they moved out of their building because they had a short job and they needed space. And then they moved out. And I go by here.
Where's Hero Tech at?
That's on the back.
So, Hero Tech does not own this property?
At least, at least I remember.
I was just told that Hero Tech was going to be out the first of the month.
Is that still legal property, are they?
Yes, for a while.
That's why I wanted to go on.
I pulled up the zoning map. The way that you've had these color quoted are correct for all three industrial.
That is.
So, the industrial boundary and all that, that is heavy industrial with the.
It does touch all of that, okay. I didn't tap into it after front.
Yeah, the properties that are not highlighted are the downtown.
Okay.
Or actually residential office, it looks like.
So, those two pieces that touch main are still heavy industrial?
Still some heavy industrial.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the shoreline steel and then the industrial boundary are both heavy industrial.
Oh, okay.
But if in one there was opportunity there, that can be changed accordingly?
But the master plan doesn't necessarily consider all these properties as us wanting them as future light industrial, correct?
I believe it does. Those, I believe those areas in the master plan were all still.
Which property?
At least what is light industrial?
Well, yes. Up here on Clark, that only little sliver of light industrial.
That is, that is light industrial in the master plan.
I think it is.
And this whole map, I mean. And everything around here, it was all single family. I don't know why we did that.
I think it was, I think what happened with that, when one of them was zoned, it was just zoned, 99, they thought it was there. They did it light industrial, they zoned it that way. I don't recall on the master plan on the future, if we included it in there or if we left it as all single family. So, it is a non-conforming, well, it is a non, seriously, non-conforming because it is zoned, technically it's spot zoned. The, that would be up to the community or of course the new landowner to pursue what they want to do with that if that ownership change here falls down.
Well, if it changed ownership, would they still use it for light industrial? Our master plan is saying.
If it's still zoned light industrial, yes. The master plan is there to guide, so if the community wanted to take action, the community can initiate a rezoning or a landowner can petition the community for a rezoning. So, yes, technically it could be zoned. You could remove it and zone that new site. But then I guess you have a non-conforming building that someone will most likely occupy and start doing heavy industrial in it if it's still viable building. And then becomes an issue of regulation. Someone cites someone or, you know, for not, for operating a business there. Two ways you can look at it, if it was a dilapidated building and it looked like it was going to come down, it might be that I could rezonate. If it's something that's a viable business that's there.
I don't know, like all the taxes. I mean, say, crack misses in front of it, I think that's ideal. So, through our efforts here, is there any way to clean up? What's, or are we just making up regulations?
I think what you would be setting here is basically, you know, you know, there's really nothing you're going to do to clean up or change the character out there today. Can you change the character in the future? Absolutely. You know, if someone comes in and petitions and wants to do something with a basic site, next time someone comes in, well, you can hold them to all the regulations and do it correctly for whatever that means, be it another scrap yard or be it another industrial, industrial use.
I'm open.
I just may, you know, when the whole set property came to us, you know, it was, I guess what I would ask of us is what do we want? Because, you know, they, obviously they requested light industrial in an area that wasn't light industrial, we granted it light industrial. So, I mean, when we're looking at that downtown, is, you know, are the potential downtown, do we still want to think about, like when we did our master plan, you know, the goal was to make that, you know, all cozy? And, but are we, is that still our plan? I guess, and I think we've got to ask ourselves that. Like, we'll be revisiting the master plan next year, probably, starting.
Every five years.
Yeah, we'll be starting to work on it next year. And I just think, you know, going forward, that's just something we got to consider, you know, like if everybody comes in and wants, like that's when we handed it to them, then that's kind of, you know, we've got to make a decision if we're going to stick to it, stick to it or be accommodating to the people that come in. You know, it's kind of a battle.
Some of these pieces of land here on Main Street by the tracks, it's so small up here that I don't know what heavy industrial you're going to get, you know what I mean? I don't know how big, you know, there's two, actually there's two squares on each side of the tracks. Actually, maybe a bit bigger than the squares, but, you know, I mean.
Right, for those that may not be, sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, what would you put there? It's a small piece of land.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the one that's to the south of the tracks, that's along Shoreline Steel, that is actually part of the foundry property and that is an actual road easement that takes you along the tracks there. So, that prevents that from being a landlot. But I have to agree, when you look at the founder, it's hard to say. Because, I mean, depending upon, with any of these things, it's what the market's going to bring. What, you know, if the economy's there, it will do it. I think with our master plan, we put, we set in place everything to make the village welcoming to do that type of development. We put the right regulations in. We specified, you know, what we're looking for there, but it hasn't come. You know, that's, so, there's a part, we play, you know, the planning commission, the village, to play a role in being accommodating, having regulations and ordinances that make sense, that are easy to navigate and get through quickly. But at the same time, you have to have the desire of people to come. And again, with the, the big question, I think, with the foundry site is, what can be done there? You know, there's definitely a cost of cleanup there. I mean, it's been identified, I haven't gone through the environmental reports on it. But it's most likely that partially those parcel parts of the property up against Main Street may not be buildable for residential. You may only be able to do a light industrial under standard without having some really large cleanup mitigation type of project that would take on there. Because there's different levels for what is considered residential clean and what's considered industrial clean, which you can do on those sites.
Who owns that land?
Ripped and bent.
Lovely. And who?
Lovely.
No, who had a mirror on there?
Ripped and bent.
Some of the main street property, for the foundry property?
That was, that was some of the property that was being considered for the natural office of those.
You know, really at the end of the day, what we want and what, it's not ours.
Right.
So, you know, we can have a desire, but.
He's another one, no site plan. The building got torn down, it was just laying there in the sky and he threw some walls up and there it is. No, nothing ever done to bring them to climbing or the village. And there he sat for the last 13, 15 years.
What was that?
That portion of the building that he is now in, that was just kind of hanging out there beforehand, nearly tore apart the rest of the foundry from that. He never came before the village to get that building, pull a building permit to finish off the walls or.
That building has been standing for 40 years.
Well, yeah, but there was sections of it that were missing. When they tore off the building from it, that wasn't pre-standing.
That was a pre-standing building. That was their die shop.
Now, the picture that I was given showed a portion of it missing and then he didn't come to.
That was their die shop. Trust me, I grew up right there by it.
There's still nothing on record to be pulling a building, or any else to.
Oh.
It changed ownership, right?
This is going to be my comment on this subject. And not to try to avoid. And, not to try to avoid it, but what I'm hearing particularly from you is that a lot of this took place back when you said on this board.
Absolutely.
And nothing was done?
No. Very long vote.
Huh?
Very long vote, but some of it has occurred more recently, the Ballard property.
I don't know how, how long Ballers have been stocking cars out there.
I mean, there was a house there, not all that long ago.
Well, yeah, they took down the two houses, yeah, but they had been stockpiling scrap vehicles on part of that problem for an extended period of time. And then they eventually put the wall up, put the fencing up.
But shouldn't that wall and fencing have come to planning to...
Well, I don't know.
Trees, bushes, cement? Sewers, curbs? That whole corner should have curbs at this point.
The zoning requirement doesn't...
Yeah. Zoning, I mean, it, when, when the property transferred, I don't know when, how long Ballers has been, longer than I have been here with you guys. There should have came the planning commission. There should have been a site plan done, there should have been a fence, there should have been, there should have all come here. But it didn't. But since then, we have engaged Ballers, we've talked to them about the parking, we've told them above that front parking standard should be. I know Chris has had some discussions related to potentially doing an entranceway and some type of a gateway assignment, cleaning it up, and they seem to be amounted to it. So, I think as you move forward, that's how you're going to work with people. It's not necessarily the best situation, but it should have came to planning commission. There should have been a site plan for any, any development that takes place in heavy, light industrial, or even the industrial office, all requires a site plan.
Be a really good corner to have a welcome anyway, it's like...
Well, we're trying to get it cleaned up, but once again, I'm chasing after ten, fifteen-year-old problems. Trying to clean them up and trying to make the best of a bad situation. So, you know, do I take offense to former board members who accomplish squat? And I don't want to criticize it? Yes, I do. But it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is to engage these people and try to get what we can after the fact, because you sure as hell can't take them into court and try to rectify it now, because you'll never win. And believe me, when I take our counsel into court, I have a ninety-nine percent chance of winning. And I'm not going to take Ballers into court knowing that I can't win. But I'm going to talk to them like we have. And I expect them, because they are sitting on two, two lots. And a village can't straddle two lots. So, they're going to do a lot combined. And we talked about, you know, where they stayed their vehicles. Those vehicles are staged to be picked up by outside companies, so they bring them outside the fence to be picked up. And we, we told them that they need to stay against the wall, which is a designated area for pickup. You know, and they are going to do some green space out front and a burn or some tree plants. But these are things that we had a conversation and encouraged them to do, and they agreed to do them. Now, are they in performance? No. But to try to make up and to try to go against a court, you know, ten, fifteen years after the fact, we won't win.
We don't have nothing to stand on when these business owners, knowing they did things they don't want right with a corrupt government. And we've got nothing to stand on to fix...
The courts are going to say, we failed.
Well, absolutely, we failed.
We failed.
Okay, so, we can, we, we're going over these zoning ordinances, we can certainly use existing conditions as examples to lead us into maybe better decisions for future zoning ordinances. But to sit here and talk about code enforcement and all that, we're here against the interwheels, so I think we should try to avoid dwelling on this subject too much and just move on with what we have at the end here.
I agree, Hal, I think we collectively agreed as a group too, that that was what we were going to do from day one, is some of the four, to make sure everything was in place properly and not worry about the past.
So, what are we going to, what, what we do, how is it going to rectify the past as far as the future?
It's not, it's not going to worry about the future, we're worried about the future.
I think we need to focus on those transitional times when people come in here and, and want to change things or, you know, and we have to be just more aware of, there's nothing we can do about it. Right now, you know, working with us is our best bet.
I mean, it sounds like they're invested in that. I mean, if they're willing to do some of the things that we're asking, they're wanting a little bit of a partnership.
Right, Ballers is pretty well-respected in the community, I don't think they want to lose that. And they're in the community beyond the community, like the county. So, I don't, you know, I do think for at least them, they're, they're going to be willing to work with us as much as we're willing to work with them.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think, you know, with the other properties, you know, we just have to be aware when we drive by and receive the transitions or, you know, and we do have a code enforcement officer now that, you know...
Another one?
Just saying, we still have...
I think the important thing is, like Mr. Capper just said, is to put in place the language going forward.
Right.
Okay, we're constantly addressing these old problems. I think we even got the truck company to fill the weeds that was growing up around this fence. You know, now we're, you know, having this conversation about screening. He's opposed to screening because he wants the cops and everybody else to be able to see through his fence at night. So, he has a concern about if he screens it, then it may give an opportunity for someone doing something wrong, not to be seen. So, you know, that conversation is ongoing. But it's important that we have in place language going forward.
And that's what I'm trying to do. I, I think with the development guidebook that we put together and looking at the processes at the building department of how the site plan gets approved, how we meet with someone and try to have a pre-application. We're laying the groundwork for moving forward and addressing these things in the future. If I could just add one other thing, just a crazy thought I have, which I sometimes have. Everybody's talking about this corner, you know, this is the entranceway to twenty, in New Haven. But at one point in time, the community decided that this was the corner we wanted to put all of industrial in. Maybe the way of attacking it is own it, make it what it is, put the sign up, welcome to New Haven Industrial District. Call it out, and maybe the landowner, the property owners there can see, hey, we would like our side of the street to look as nice as the other side. Because it'd be perfect without us, there's a lot more investment, I think, in taxes and some, for someone to come over to this side. And as far as the county's looking at this area, we're marketing, we're marketing New Haven and Jester Field and Northern End as one, one common area for industrial development. So, you call from the state saying, we're looking for you, there's so many acres of this type of property or a building of such size, it's one of the things we're looking at. So, it might be, you know, if, if, if the property owners are in for it, if they're interested in a sign, maybe that's a way of addressing it. And then people come in and go, oh, this is the industrial side of town, there must be another side that looks a little nicer. And just thinking that's just...
Good idea.
When we come in.
No, but actually, that's a really good idea.
Just a...
Okay, well, not that we're just about to sign, so we'll move on to sign ordinance. Good?
Here's where we're at with the sign ordinance. As I told you guys last month when we got together, I had gone through the document, marked it up, provided it to the attorney. The attorney basically looked at it, said, yeah, all the things that you cited are correct, these are problematic areas, but did not necessarily offer any ways to rectify the document. So, as I explained to you, one of the things that we wanted to do in this upcoming year as a planning service to all of our communities and county was to try to attack this. Not saying that we were going to come up with a exact language for the village, but to look at a model ordinance that would address how you deal with, what is the legally prescribed way to now deal with legal signs? Deal with these temporary sets, deal with all these issues that we're seeing in the sign ordinance. Where it's at right now is, boss in our department basically signed up on the idea. We took it upstairs to court counsel, to John Shapka, who's the lead attorney for the county. He's taking a look at the, he's taking a look at the Supreme Court case right now, looking to see if it's something he wants his staff to take on and make some recommendations. Or kick it back to us to potentially send it out for an RFP, looking for some legal counsel on that. So, it's going to be a long learned haul, but we're definitely going to be working towards a, some type of a model ordinance that at least can give language that all of our communities can use to address these items. What I think, once that is completed, what we can do is we can craft some language, but ultimately, that documents to go back to the village attorneys, because they're the ones that would need to sign off on that and say, okay, this, this hits the mark. Because where signs, where signs get weird is, some communities include them in their zoning ordinance, and then they become the domain of the planning commission. And others, it's just a separate ordinance that really only is taken care of at the city council or the village council level. In Macomb County, in most cases, it's rolled into zoning, because that's where it was traditionally there. But it's, when we start talking about these freedom of speech protections and these elements, it starts getting, it starts going a little bit beyond the realm of planners and it starts getting them a role with attorneys. So, that's where we're kicking it right now. Should have, within a month, next month, should give you at least an update on the direction that we've been given to go, so we know what direction we're to go. And then hopefully have a timeframe, yes. So, again, if we leave it on the back, I think we made significant progress on a number of elements in there. If we just put this on the back burner, I think we can come back to it again and fix those, the front end of them. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer about that, but...
Anybody? We're good, we're on with that?
Okay.
Uh, new business, PUD district language, we got that email, and you can run it to us as well?
Yeah, with the PUD language, what we basically did is, we've been working through the same issue in, in the city of Utica. There were some things that came out of the Utica rewrite that I felt were stronger than the language that we had in ours. I think it also, the, we were looking at initially, a PUD had the size of twenty acres. Most communities make them look like one size of five, because it's always up to the community to prove it or not. So, if someone comes with a great idea on five acres, well, pass on them. It's because in some cases, we have irregular commercial properties, we've got a number of different places where potentially a PUD could be a way to go. Plus, with the PUD overlay, it allows, if you look in section B, or I should say section A, it kind of calls out what it's about. It's about being more flexible. That schedule of regulations that dictates single-family houses and how they're set back and how multiple-family houses are set back are all very rigid. With the PUD, if a developer comes in and works with the community, uses can be mixed. You could have, you could come up with a development that potentially had commercial, complementary commercial to residential. You could have residential mixed at different scales. You've seen how PUDs are, can be done as a, as a residential, just complete subdivision, because you have those. But in some areas, you'll see, you'll see more mixed use, which kind of offers more flexibility. Someone wanted to come in and look at a property, trying to give an example here, because we don't really have any existing old buildings, but, you know, if you're looking at wanting to put a downstairs commercial, upstairs residential, PUD could give the flexibility of doing that without having to specifically write it into the zoning ordinance. Because ultimately, with the PUD ordinance, the way it's, way it's laid out in here is that, and you guys can read through it for next, we'll discuss it in more detail next month. A developer comes to the communities, comes with an idea, he may say, I want a PUD. He may sit down with the planner and the engineer and say, well, this isn't going to really work for the community, but suggest it. If he plans to go forward, he comes to the planning commission, planning commission looks at the site plan, if they approve the site plan, there's a public hearing that's held. And ultimately, the village council then makes the approval of the PUD. The PUD also has the mechanism in for that as different elements are negotiated within the agreement, be it the density of the amount of single-family homes that are there or, or how sewage and drainage are going to be taken. There could be many, many different factors in the development process, can be all negotiated in that. But ultimately, can always, ultimately should be, and it is in the original language of our PUD, distilled down into a legal document that basically says, this is what the village is responsible for, this is what the developer is responsible for. That's signed by both parties, it becomes a legal fighting guiding document for how that parcel gets developed. And then what happens, what those consequences are in the future if certain things are met. So, take a look at it. There are some places in here where it, where it calls out specific things, like in residential densities can be. If you're looking at residential density, a developer can come in and say, I'm going to be able to reserve X amount of green space and be able to use the natural drainage of the land. If you allow me to cluster the housing more on this side of the property, and if those setbacks and seem workable, that project can go, you know, that project could be approved and go forward. So, it really gives a lot of flexibility in the development process. It's a nice tool they have in the back, in your back pocket if someone comes to you and says, I'm looking at that tricycle property out there, and I'd like to do, I'd like to do a, say, I want to do residential medical, where I've got, you know, in-care house, but then I'm going to have some commercial medical. And I might even want to do some type of a pharmacy or some type of a convenience store. All of that can be packaged together as a multi-acre property and a full plan, full site plan, just like a subdivision would be done. But we show the location of each of those uses, connectivity of the roads and all that together. That's something that the community can work in partnership with and develop. So, what you have before you is a draft cut of that. There are some specific areas, like I said, in terms of residential density. There's a section here that talks about mixed use and commercial, some rules on what can be done. What we're proposing in here is a PUD that can be used in any district. So, if someone comes in in the downtown district and says, I want to do commercial and I want to do upstairs, downstairs type of thing, that would be possible. But there are some rules in there that says residential cannot happen in light, there's some common sense rules that are included there. So, take a look at those and see if it makes sense, or if there's anything else we need to be added to it. We can take a look at that. We started out with the village's initial PUD, that's currently in the zoning ordinance. There are some comments in the sidebar where you'll see sections of the communities that have been crossed out, but they've been moved up into other sections. So, it was kind of, took kind of about fifty percent of the tax for the unit, fifty percent of New Haven, put it together, reorganized it, and I think we've got a fairly workable document. At least working all the other sections.
Did you have any input on Shelby's, uh, PUD data?
No, we didn't have it. No, those, we didn't have, county had no, no, no input on Shelby's.
Did you, did you guys look at that at all?
We've taken, yeah, we, we did a fair, my staff did a fairly large survey. We tend to look at Shelby, we look at Point Township, we look at Sterling Heights, we look at, we look at comparable, comparable size type communities. And also, communities that we know there are similar type of developments taking place there. So, we look at a lot of them. I, I won't go into details on different, some communities that are large do it really well, some communities that's, I should say, some small communities have great ordinances, and some big communities you think would be fantastic or terrible, so...
I would have referenced, because it was referenced during our class, that it was a, a model, a good piece of...
I would ima, I would imagine that my staff, that some of the elements may be in here, that they definitely took a look at it. Because I know we work pretty closely with their planning plan.
Anybody else? Good?
We just going to talk about...
Locals, yeah.
We going to talk about this at the next meeting?
Yeah, my intent was just to introduce it to you guys, because I didn't expect you guys to have a chance to even read through it completely, so... I figured if you guys had any initial questions and that, take a look at it, we just, we'll remember discussion next time.
Is that email that you sent us, can we comment on that? Or no, I don't think so.
The one that's, you know what, that has, I, I sent it to you guys, I, I sent two of them to you as attachments, but I put these files back in the Google Drive folder.
Okay.
So, they should be, when I get to the office tomorrow, I'll send a new email out, just showing that, you know, just sharing it with you, make sure everyone's got a link to it.
Okay.
Because I think those, if you'd be able to do the markups on them.
Everybody good with that?
I've got some city council versus village council.